Gary Florence, how are you?
I'm okay, Jane.
What's new?
Just the daily battle trying to get the fire station built.
Oh, I bet that's one thing.
Yeah. We're going to have a semi-open house in three or four weeks. We're going to invite the various first responder groups from around the community and the town board and employees, et cetera. We don't want to open it up to the public, and this is more of a work in progress sort of thing, but to let Angie know when. It'll be a Saturday morning, probably. Masks will be required, so we've... We're working more on the inside right now. This week they're doing the septic system, so it moves ahead.
Makes progress.
Yeah.
It'll be fun. I like to see that.
Yeah, it's... It's a good job at this point, and yeah, I'm really happy with it. So far, we're more or less on budget, so I think I'll have enough money to finish this one.
There's... That's a plus, if you can finish the project.
Yeah. What's new with you?
You know, it's just such a weird world with work, and I never know from one day to the next what we're doing.
Yeah.
But other than that, you know, the town just keeps being the town.
Well, along with everything else, we found out Barb has breast cancer, so she's getting chemo for that.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Yeah, she gets another session Friday, and that pretty much knocks her out, so...
Oh, I'm so sorry about that.
Yeah.
You know, we're right down here, so let me know if there's anything I can do or an errand or whatever.
It's been a really bad year. Her daughter died of cancer the 2nd of January, breast cancer, different type. Todd Ficken, who was the owner of the company that, you know, our management company, he died of cancer about three months ago.
Oh, my gosh.
Neil Levy died of cancer a couple of months ago.
I knew that. That was so sad.
Yeah. It's just... Jill Beanster was texting me today. She's back in Iowa, and she said that 2020 just sucks, and I said, "Yeah, not in a good way either."
Right, in a very bad way.
Yeah. People say, "We just need to start this year over again." I say, "I can't do that."
No, I'm not going to go through another one of these.
Yeah, let's jump ahead, so...
Yeah.
And here comes my cat to see what's going on.
All right.
Yeah.
Yeah, Mickey likes to see everything that's going on.
Yeah, I've seen behind you, so... In fact, it's one of the two cats.
Well, we're... We have a lot of cats right now. My daughter's back, and she brought cats too, so we all have...
Hi, Margaret.
Yeah, unmute Margaret, and then we'll talk to you.
We... Okay, now you're moving.
There we go.
Yeah.
Yeah, my computer's freaking out because I haven't logged in for a while, so I've got all these things popping up.
Yeah, I just went through the same thing, and it's like, I need to use this more often, so...
Exactly, exactly. I started this like 10 minutes ago, trying to get everything up to get in.
Me too. Hi, Danny. Oh, there's Big Buck Cat.
This is... Yeah, this is the bigger of the two brothers. So he's trying to get in the picture. Now that he's been seen, he's going away, I hope.
No, yeah, still on Mickey. I don't know what other cat will show up.
Yeah, well, he was walking around behind you there for a minute, so...
Yeah, he likes to be seen. He's very public.
Hey, Gary, how's Barb doing?
She is through two sessions of chemo. She's got another one coming up this Friday, and that pretty much knocks her down for a week to 10 days. So she's got one after this, the first part of November, and then they'll do surgery, right now it's scheduled for sometime in December, they're going to set it up, so doing okay. Her hair right now is shorter than mine.
Hey, I can get you guys some glitter tattoos.
It's... I've never been in the situation where I had the longest hair in the house, so cats have the longest hair, but yeah, she's holding in there, but she's not real happy-go-lucky.
Oh, well, I'm thinking about both of you guys, and I care, and please, 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 let me know if you ever need anything.
Yeah, no, we've got a lot of... A long line of people that want to do that, but you know, Barb's...
Yeah.
She's not one to really take a lot of help like that, so...
I understand. I understand, and you know, you want to... You still want to distance. You still want to be safe, but...
Yeah.
But even if it's just stopping for something on the way home and dropping it at your doorstep, you know?
I was telling Jane, you guys are the town council, as I understand it. In three or four weeks or so, sometime early November, we're going to do a semi-public open house for the station in progress.
Oh, nice.
And it's... We're at the point where we're painting stuff on the inside, but we won't have the carpet, et cetera, down, but we want to let everybody see it. So it's basically going to be the town officials, town employees, and then the first responder folks, UTE rad and ambulance and the other fire departments, so we'll do coffee and doughnuts. You bring the mask.
You can do that.
Well, that I can do.
Yeah.
I'm excited about that.
Yeah, I am too, but it's just making me crazy, dealing with Comcast is... It's been an experience.
So what do you have to do with Comcast? Is that the...
Well...
Internet service or...?
It's Internet and TV, but interestingly, they are two different departments.
Oh.
For the TV, I'm having to deal with Comcast government. For the Internet, I'm having to deal with Comcast business.
Oh.
The government folks are pretty easy. That's the trench we dug the other day and put the pipe in, but the business people keep insisting they have to put their own pipe in, so it's just making me crazy.
Oh, well, that's silly.
Yeah.
Well, I'm unfrozen for a minute, so let's start this until... And if it fails, Margaret, you have to take over, okay?
Oh, okay. I'm trying to print my agenda. I forgot that I turned my printer off.
So we should be okay.
Okay, now it's printing. Good.
This is the special board of trustees meeting. Today is Tuesday, October 13th. The time is 7:02. All trustees are present except for Chris Quinn. Do we have any additions, deletions, or corrections to this agenda besides what I'm going to add? I would like to add, after item five, so consider it 5A, 5B, a draft agenda, as many of you make, or a draft budget. As you may recall, by October 15th, the manager needs to present a draft agenda to the board in order that we're in compliance with state regulations. So I would move that we add that addition. Is there anything further? There is a motion on the table.
One second.
All those in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Catherine. That motion passed us. We will have a brief presentation of that. Item three is for persons present but not on the agenda. Now is your time to go ahead and speak if you're registered to do so.
I guess that would be me.
That would be great.
Going way back to 1919, 2015, when we started planning this project... I'm Gary Florence, the treasurer for the fire district, by the way, for those of you who don't know me. I'm responsible for that large building behind you. But anyway, back when we were planning this, we talked about the fact that we were going to pave what we call Carcel Way from, what is that, Green Mountain Falls Road up to the station. The plan right now is to do that on the 2nd of November. We also talked about including the town and getting your parking lot paved, and we... Last week, we were working with Martin Marietta on getting that done, and they got the bid for the entire project about, oh, 3:30 this afternoon, I think we got it. If the town wants to come in with us and pave your parking lot, that cost to you would be about $25,515. Looking at... And we're paying all the staging costs and everything else. If you were to do this separately on your own, you'd end up paying about 13% more for a contractor to stage all their equipment and do everything else. What Martin Marietta is proposing to do, and this is more for information, Angie will have it on your next meeting for a vote. They will pave the town parking lot. We will furnish all... This is Martin Marietta. We will furnish all labor, equipment, material to fine grade within one-tenth of a foot and construct a three-inch compact asphalt surface, approximately 696 square yards. They will also... And of course now, oh, there it is. They will... That includes striping your parking lot and providing parking blocks there where the hill drops off. So we wanted to get this in front of you tonight, so you'd have some time to think about it. Angie's got, I think, the entire bid for the entire project, including yours. It's about $147,000, but as I say, your cost would be $25,515. So I'm just more of an information item tonight.
And then I can add it on the agenda on the 20th for actual consideration, and the full proposal will be there with everything for action. It'll be properly agendized and everything, but just to give you guys a heads up.
Great. Great. I'll look forward to seeing that.
Yeah, if anybody has any questions between now and then, get ahold of me, and I'll feed them back through our contractor to Martin Marietta, the subcontractor.
Great.
Other than that, as a generalization, the fire department project's going fairly well. This week, we're doing the major project this week is the septic system, so that's all I've got unless anybody's got questions for me.
Oh, that sounds good. I'll look forward to seeing that, and thanks for giving us a timely heads up on that. I appreciate it.
Well, three and a half hours notice may not be timely, but...
It's relative.
We can. All right, I'm going to drop out unless someone has a question at this point.
We're good. Thank you.
All right, I'll see you next week.
All right.
Thank you.
Is there anyone further that wishes to speak, Angie? Did we have anyone?
Nope, there were no signups.
All right. Next item is the consent agenda, which is bringing to record the accounts payable for September 24th to October 6th. The SIRSAA quotation acceptance extension, the SIRSAA 2021 quotation approval, the land use code rewrite or RFP approval, and the land use code rewrite intern position description approval. Angie, you want to give a little briefing on this, please?
Sure, so accounts payable, that's just bills for the... For this period, as usual. The SIRSAA renewal, I have been trying to... Starting now with all these transitions and everything to provide memos. The SIRSAA renewal, basically, it came to my attention that we need to renew SIRSAA for 2021. I did submit an extension because that was due on October 1st. Going through the clerk's email, I went ahead and submitted an extension. They approved the extension, and the bid, the quote, is for $21,000. That is up a little bit from last year. Last year, we were at about $16,000. We did do a complete review of our coverages this year, making sure that everything is properly on our policy. So the... And there was a typical increase. Coronavirus made that, I think, a little bit bigger than ideal, but nonetheless, we need insurance, so we recommend approval of that. The land use code rewrite and land use code rewrite intern position description, this is a request for proposal. We did get the funding from DOLA and from Kirkpatrick Family Foundation, and so basically, there's a little breakdown in the background here of the... What all that money is for. And we do recommend just approving this. We'll go ahead and post the RFP for two weeks and then post the position for the land use code rewrite intern position, and then hopefully that project will be off and running this winter.
All right, Paul, do you have any questions on any of these items?
Where do we post the RFP to?
So the RFP is posted on our website, and as well, it's posted on a site, a national site. I'm not... I don't think it's international. It's a national site called BidNet, and so basically, that's like the place where everybody posts bids.
All right, anything further? We can approve this as one motion, right? I'm asking.
Absolutely.
All right. I would move that we accept this consented agenda. And the items therein. All those in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Saying none, that motion passes. And the next item on our agenda is consideration of resolution 202014, which is a resolution of the town of Green Mountain Falls, Colorado, supporting the outdoors Colorado grant application for the resilient communities funding. This is approving the GOCO coronavirus... Corona buyer's trail stewardship opportunities grant, and the application submission deadline is October 15th, which is why we are meeting in a special meeting tonight in particular. I'm sure you all have had a chance to look and submit any sort of corrections or questions to Angie about this. By and large, it is so that we can bolster some of our trails, including having surveys done of the properties. Angie, what do you want to add about that?
So just really quickly, there were... Can you see my... The Word document here? Or I wonder if I'm sharing that or not?
Not yet. Still the agenda.
Yeah. Okay, here we go. Sorry about that. So the... I just wanted to show you the changes. They were pretty de minimis, just a few words I've highlighted, and then this one was 2019 and changed it to 2020, so very, very de minimis, or I don't know, almost moot changes. And then I did receive a quote today from an engineer, Andre Bracken. He's... He does, I mean, traffic and everything, so he gave us a really solid quote on the surveying and assessing of the trails and trail locations, trail signage at the crossings, that sort of thing, for about $50,000. So the budget on the grant will change just a little bit to accommodate that.
And did you get that date changed?
Yep. So the date from 2019 changed to 2020, and then there were just a few words on... I can show you here. I just highlighted.
Yeah.
And then here at the beginning of the second page, that used to say 2019, and now it says 2020.
And how comfortable do we feel with the matching funds?
Is that a question for me?
Yes, please, because it's a matching grant, and you had talked about where some of the other funds would be.
Yeah, so the matching funds for this grant would come from... It'd be a total $79,000. $30,000 would be from the Kirkpatrick Family Foundation grant for parking and signage, and then $4,000 would come out of the... Draft budget here. So $4,000 would come from the Colorado Trust. We did purchase a metal sign-making machine, and then additional supplies for that totaling $33,000, so that can also be used for matching. So basically, $4,000 would come out of our Colorado Trust, and then the additional $12,000 that's in Colorado Trust for a total of $16,000, that $12,000 would be contingency, so it would only be used if absolutely necessary.
Okay. Well, I like that we already have that Kirkpatrick money in hand that I didn't even think about using the grant. Well, I like that we already have that Kirkpatrick money in hand, that I didn't even think about using the grant we have, that we have to ask for more, so that's very good. So, the board, do you have any further questions? I think we've all had a, a chance to think about this a little. I would move that we, um, approve going forward with this.
I'll second, and Angie, you did a great job with it.
Yes, I would agree with that, too. All those in favor, vote by saying aye.
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 None opposed, that motion passes, and thanks, Angie, I know it's a lot of work and I'm hopeful for this. I think this is gonna be a great thing. Helping us out going forward.
Alright, do you need more letters of support?
Oh, gosh, any letters of support that we could get from the community would be great. Um, they, you know, any, any support from the community would be great, this resolution will help, but definitely individual letters of support from board of trustees members or nonprofits or local businesses, anybody.
Alright, get them invited fifteenth, and I'll be writing my letter, too.
Does somebody have a template so we know what to write?
Um, I do.
I don't know, I don't know exactly what's expected, so.
Okay, I could send out a sample that you could do what you want with.
Okay, good.
Sounds good, and I can send that out to our trail ambassadors list serve, too.
Okay, great, sounds good.
And I just submitted a letter from the Chamber of Commerce.
Good, good, all good things. Good thoughts there. Alright, item six is correspondence. Um, we can look at these as one item, I think. At least the first two, the DOLA land use code rewrite con- contract, which is the state of Colorado Small Dollar Grant Award Terms and Conditions, and the DOLA land use code rewrite, the summary of the Small Dollar Award Terms and Conditions. Um, what's the update on that?
So basically, these are, um, these are grant contracts that were pre-approved from, based on the letter that we asked, the letter that we wrote requesting the funds. Um, and they, they're small dollar grants, so they're just like, boom, they're in the portal, and you can submit your reimbursements and whatnot, um, for the land use code rewrite.
I'm looking forward to getting that done, that's great. Um, item C is the DOL, I'm sorry, I should have asked if anyone had any questions, it's like I think on my own show here. Does anyone have any questions on these land use? Alright, so the DOLA flood recovery projects, Maple Street and Midland Street culvert placement. Um, this, this is the notice to proceed letter, it's project twenty-zero-zero-one. If you have looked, uh, Maple Street is in really good shape, I didn't look today, but I did talk to Tom Hughes this weekend, and he was getting ready to, uh, put down seed and, um, the landscape netting to hold the seed into place. Uh, despite some public hue and cry, I think this is going to look better, and it's certainly safer than the bridge that was in place before. I think it looks great, and I did wanna put it out there, um, for public, public knowledge. The Midland Street project, that bridge itself is getting just more dangerous, you can feel it as you drive across it. It's very timely that we're doing this. But the thing that people are gonna notice is that they need to stage at the foot there of the hill where everybody complains that there's rocks and dirt and staging equipment, but there's nowhere for them to stage on Midland, it just makes sense that they can move about safely and have their equipment in the public land right there at the foot of Olafah. So, um, that's happening, and some of the big rocks are being moved down to the lake, as is what I've been told, so some of those will be going, but until Midland is up and fixed, there's still gonna be some activity there. Um, Angie, what do you have to add on my little soapbox?
Absolutely, so, um, the, I think that, you know, Maple Street is, is looking good, really great, and, um, obviously, that's a, a huge, uh, culvert compared to what was there before, definitely not something you can run down and pick up at, uh, Home Depot. But, um, that, you know, Midland Street, um, that staging area is necessary to get the project done. And I know that it's a, it's a pain point for some folks, but we're getting there and, um, you know, hang in there. Um, they need that space right now to, to get it done, so, um, before you know it, it'll be done and stuff will be out of there.
Well, I think the folks on Midland will be ecstatic that they'll have a safe, a safe bridge, and the trash truck people are going to be very happy, too.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so IMD is Colorado Department of Revenue Memorandum of Understanding for Control of Confidential Data. So, give me a little background on that one.
This one's just, uh, um, a housekeeping item. Nope, that's not it, where did it go?
Is that in the agenda?
Oh, is that not in the agenda?
Wilson and Company Notice to Proceed is the last page I have.
And that must not be in, I'll just pop it in on the, I will pop that in on the twentieth, no big deal. It's a housekeeping item, it's like, just access to tax data, uh, information, stuff like that, that helps us give good projections and collect the information that we need to do to do our jobs on the finance side.
Well, we'll look at it on the twentieth, and then, because I'm terrible about following my own suggestions, um.
Oh, you forgot your five A and five B.
Five A and five B, the budget, so it's just five B, we did five A with a consideration of resolution. Uh, this is a draft budget, do you have anything to share with us, Angie, on that?
So, um, I did confirm with, um, the accountant and, uh, legal that we actually can, I can just, um, send you the dra, the first draft via email, uh, and then publish, publish the notice. Um, so that makes it a lot easier, we can get some of the initial questions out of the way and researching and improving that first draft. Um, and then we can just review the second draft at our meeting in November, which will be much more polished.
Perfect.
So that makes, makes things a little bit easier, uh, 'cause I, we didn't have it until today, this afternoon, ready to go, so.
Alright, well, we've introduced it, it'll be published, we will look at it in November. Uh, does anyone have anything else? Seeing none, I would move that we adjourn, the time is seven twenty-four.
Yay! Oh, you went four minutes over, though.
Mine's over. Myself speak. So I think it was a motion, that was a second for Margaret.
Oh, second, yeah.
What am I saying, aye?
Can I say one thing for you?
Yes.
I just wanted to give you an update on the trail ambassadors, we've had a really good turnout from our small group. Uh, people have been really engaged going out there, meeting with people, uh, mostly on the weekends, so I just wanted to give you an update on that. Uh, one of the biggest things that has come up has been access to maps, so I'll be bringing that up just in a, a kind of, uh, formal report for the next trustee meeting, all the concerns that ambassadors are seeing. Uh, but just having an actual physical map that we can give people. By, and then, I think, having some type of urgency put on trying to get, uh, maps with correct trails identified, which I think this grant is gonna be really helpful for. Um, those are, are some of the biggest issues that I think we're seeing. Um, so that's just an update, but the ambassadors have been great, I just wanna give a, a big thank you to them and let you know how hard they've been working.
That's so exciting, so where, where is the staging point that they hang out at, is it down by the trailhead at the lake, or?
Yeah, so because we have a small group, uh, the way that we've sort of designed it so that it's not burdensome and that we, uh, have the most retention of volunteers, is to kind of leave it up to the volunteers, so typically, what people have been doing that I've been seeing is, uh, they will wear their ambassador shirt um, on their typical hiking routine, and they'll start out, you know, down by the lake or um, at the trailheads for a little bit, and then go on their normal hikes, and they'll interact with people on the trails. Uh, and so there's a little bit of both, but it's not burdensome to the volunteers, and they still have fun while they're doing it. And, uh, you know, just talking with the Trails in Open Space Coalition, she was in agreement, Susan Davies, uh, was in agreement that, that, you know, sounded like the best plan for retaining people. Um, I had to also talk to another program out in Montana, and their biggest challenge was also retention of volunteers, and so that's our biggest thing, is trying to make it fun and not a chore. Um, so if there are other people that wanna engage with, uh, hikers, uh, who tend to be out on the trails a lot, I think it's, it's not, um, you know, an extra, uh, chore really to, to be a trail ambassador, since there are so many people that interact just normally when they're out hiking. Um, it's just a, a little bit of a different interaction, but overall, it's been really fun.
Good, good, well, I'd be willing to volunteer, um, a couple of three hours a weekend, once we have a centralized check-in point, too. You know, so that if we, whatever we decide to have as a manned station for the check-in, for them to pick up stuff when we get to that point.
Sure, yeah, and I brought that up with, uh, with Susan Davies about having like a trail, um, kiosk or some, an ambassador kiosk, uh, but just, we don't have enough manpower to man it for, you know, the entire weekend throughout all the hiking hours. Uh, so for right now, it's just kind of people doing what they feel like they can do, and we've had a pretty good turnout on the weekends. Um, you know, the other thing that came up is, I, you know, that a lot of ambassadors are also picking up trash while they're out and about. Um, and so, trying to figure out, you know, a centralized place where we can keep trash bags so that, uh, they can just pick it up as they kind of start their shift, and that way, there's, they have access to supplies. So if you guys have any ideas about, you know, how we could include that, I think that would be really helpful for people, too.
How about the, uh, how about the land office? I don't know if that'd be a great location for it, but it's, the, the historical society might be willing to give us a key.
Definitely could do that, that'd be good. Um, Johnny, this is a question that'll be out of the blue, but, um, Creek Week always asks us how much trash we've picked up, and I think, uh, what, what the trails ambassadors have picked up would count for our, how much trash we pick up for Creek Week? How much do you think they picked up?
Oh, I mean, it's pretty much, uh, people who go out and are picking up trash, you can fill up a bag every time you go out, so it's like when your bag gets full, you're pretty much done. Uh, so, I, I don't know, I haven't quantified it, I haven't been adding that into the questions that I've been asking people.
It's one out of the blue, but I'm gonna put some numbers together for Creek Week. Um, it just, it's just nice that we participate in that, and their philosophy is everything eventually feeds down to Fountain Creek, and I tend to agree with that, so I think that's great, and I'm glad that the program is working well. Uh, Susan Davies says, by the way, that she really has enjoyed working with Green Mountain Falls, that she sees that it's people that work well together for the right purposes, so I thought that was a nice compliment for all of us.
Um, I was wondering, uh, like Margaret's, um, um, volunteering to, um, you know, man, the, I don't know, I can't recall what you called it, but, you know, like a, like a central kind of check-in station. If there are, uh, might be volunteers that are maybe less comfortable with hiking, but might be comfortable, um, helping out down, um, at Gazebo Park or, or wherever, um, that, um, that station is, to help people with things like parking.
I think having a, a check-in point like that would be great, I know, um, some people have mentioned, you know, when that, that space at Olafah's is cleared out, I mean, that would be a good spot, because you get all the, the hikers that are coming into town and the hikers that are going up to Catamount. Um, so that's a good spot to catch a lot of people. Uh, I think one of the big things that would have to be figured out is, um, you know, having a table and where are you gonna store the table, and if there are rotating volunteers, who's gonna have access each weekend, because otherwise, you know, you're gonna have the same person in charge of it, and they're gonna have to be able to open up an office to get the, all the supplies out, and I don't think that any one particular volunteer has enough time to do all that. Um, so that, that is just logistical, um, things to think about.
Well, we will be.
We're moving forward, that's my mantra this year, moving forward.
Right.
And just, oh, just as an aside, I know that the program in Bozeman, Montana, which has a really successful trail ambassador program, they actually ended up getting an AmeriCorps volunteer to sort of run that, that organizational point, part of it, to manage volunteers, do recruitment, and then also spend time out on the trails so that there's just a consistent presence. But they were able to, um, use that as their person to kind of keep consistency for some of those logistical things. So just something to think about, too.
That's a good idea, and what about the Rocky Mountain Youth Corps? That was helping work on the trail over there for Kirkpatrick, maybe we can see if they have volunteers, too.
I think, um, I think there are a lot of good ideas, I think the biggest thing moving forward is, you know, during the off-season, figuring out the map and parking and signage, all the things that we're working on now. Um, making it clear to the ambassadors what their role is and what the resources they have are before the the hiking season starts again next year is gonna be really important.
Right, I think it's important to not lose our momentum now in the slow season, so that we're up and running and ready to go whenever it happens again next summer, and it's gonna be a way better summer, 'cause it's gonna be twenty-twenty-one, and we're gonna be past this, this mess. That's my hope. Alright, great, that's great, uh, anything else? Seeing none, I will see you guys next week.
Have a good one.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.